Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the meeting to order. And Jeff, we have an addition to the agenda?
We do, Madam Chair. Denise just handed out some notes from CHI St. Joseph Public Health and is bringing copies of the contract for next year. It's already been reviewed by Jonathan. And Marley will be here and Brian will be here, so I'd ask to add it to 8B.
Okay. And with that addition, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, Dave moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Anyone here for public input? Okay. Is there anything you wish to pull from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Tom moves?
I'll second.
Ed seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
For county employee recognition today in the highway, we have Jared Miller, Maintenance Two, began the part-time position on October 28th. Human Services would like to recognize County and Tribal Financial Worker and Case Aid Day. Whereas County and Tribal Financial Workers and Case Aides provide outstanding service to people in Minnesota through their administration of public assistance programs, and whereas these dedicated professionals are responsible for the prudent expenditure of millions of dollars annually and must meet high standards of job performance and determining eligibility for public assistance, and whereas County and Tribal Financial Workers and Case Aides are well-versed in several areas and maintain detailed knowledge of public assistance programs, ensuring the delivery of effective services to clients and the public, and whereas County and Tribal Financial Workers address barriers that prevent people in Minnesota from achieving and maintaining self-sufficiency, allowing for the highest possible degree of independence from public assistance, and whereas Minnesota recognizes the valuable services County and Tribal Financial Workers and Case Aides provide through the delivery of person-centered, culturally responsive case management and accessible community services.
Thank you to each of you.
In the Sheriff, Brendan Oberg, Dispatcher Jailer began the part-time position on October 16th. And in the Auditor Treasurer Department, Lynn Spillman, 2024 elections. And Lynn Pikenin, 2024 elections.
Thank you for filling that needed position.
Absolutely.
Questions, we wanted to add them onto the agenda today since they're still here working the election today. They're temporary workers. They've put in a lot of time and work. Okay, if you want to give any additional information more, but we wanted to recognize them today since they were still here, here working.
And as the whole team has done an outstanding job working with the election. Lynn Pikenin has worked on the first floor and since it started in September, they've had over 3,000 in-person voters. And Lynn just mentioned that, yeah, we see those all three times each. So that's a lot of face time with the public. Lynn Spillman has tested all of our equipment, the Omni ballots, the DS 200s, and our 450 that we use for the ABMBs. Plus, she's working in our office to help process all of those ballots that we've got in. In addition, we have not quite, well, we have over 1,000 mail ballots and oh, 1,500 or so absentee ballots that we've brought through the mail and we're still waiting on more today. So, record numbers.
Lynn Spillman coming back to Hubbard County, working at temporary elections, as she said as well today too. She's been working and coming here to Hubbard County for 50 years.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Andrea? Welcome to your first meeting, Erin.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you on board.
Great, good morning. I just have two items on the agenda and then I figured we kind of do like we used to do with Jeff where Adam would give a construction update for the projects that we still have going, even though it's kind of winter now. But the first item I had is a resolution for our CASA 1 project that we're partnering with the City of Parker Rapids next year. It's from Trunk Highway 34 to the north city limits. And with the cross-section we're developing for that road, we're looking at eliminating parking on the road. The city has approved that and they actually requested it, but to do that, we need to approve a resolution that bans parking along that section of road. We're looking at putting, you know, two 12-foot driving lanes and then we're looking at putting like a five-foot shoulder, which isn't enough with to park a vehicle on safely. Delivery trucks can still park and make their deliveries, but with that, we're looking at doing a designated bike lane similar to, I'm not sure what the main street is that goes up further north through the development area, north of town, but similar. And I have a designated bike lane there for the road, so take away the parking to have that bike lane on the road.
So I actually drive that road a lot and there isn't much parking on there. Is the city going to send out a letter to?
Yep, the, it's Apex Engineering is the design engineer and they're going to go do face-to-face talking with businesses along there with residential homeowners. Because it's going to be a big change. There's going to be curb and gutter, storm sewer, updated ADA sidewalk, pedestrian access on it, lighting. So it'll be a big change for that cross-section of the road and they'll do a lot of communication with it too.
Okay, Dave moves to approve?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right. And the second item I have is another resolution. This is for a MINDOT project for Trunk Highway 87 next year. They plan on using our CASA 20 for a detour. And to be able to do that, they need a resolution from the board pass that they're approving the use of the detour on CASA 20. And that one is from Trunk Highway 71 to CASA 6 where we constructed this year. So it's a section of road and then they'll use our CASA 20 going north as the detour along there. So they're doing that section and then they're doing the furthest east section next year too of Trunk Highway 87.
I was wondering, are there going to be any detours for the east side too?
I haven't got any requests yet for a detour. I don't know if the scope will work on that. It might be just a mill and overlay where they could just do it under traffic. But I have an email right now out to their project engineer asking that question of where's the next half of your project and what are you doing?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Dave moves?
I'll second.
Ted seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And with those detours, we do get compensation for that. They look at the life cycle of the road and then we do get compensated. And any damage to the road, we would get compensated too, so. Yeah, that's all I had for actual agenda items, but I'll let Adam take over and get the construction.
Yeah, we just wrapped up a culvert lining project that we had subsurface complete here in October for us. So yeah, everything went pretty smooth with that, so should be looking to finalize that out here in the next month. And we also just started last week, Gladen's Construction is working on our CASA 24 box culvert and Mantrap Township's Island View Drive Box Culvert. They started that last week and we do have a detour on CASA 24 through the end of next week is what they're projecting. So they should be done with that the end of next week. They're going to leave it a gravel surface through the winter and we'll come back and pave it in the spring, so. Yeah, and that's basically our last two projects here for this year and getting ready for next year, so that's all I got.
And I did give you Erica Dravas' card. He's our Maintenance Superintendent now. If you guys have any questions or concerns from the public about snow plowing, please contact him or myself on those calls and we will try to address as quickly as we can of any issues we see. But it sounds like next week, snow's coming, so we're getting ready.
Just a quick question on 24, the box culvert is, and then the township one as well. Are our staff inspecting the work or is it a consultant?
Yep, we are inspecting both, both of them, yep.
Yeah, we had Houston design the boxes and they did the township as well and then we'll do the inspection and then we have a compensation rate for the engineering inspection on.
Okay, great.
Well, when did you expect to start on Highway 13 or CASA 13?
You know, I don't have a timeline yet laid out for next year's projects. I would, I think we'd try to push that one maybe towards the end of the summer and into the fall just because we have huge projects with the CASA 1 urban reconstruct and then we also have the roundabout going in on 7 and 40. So I think we'll do that one kind of later in the year, but it'll be very similar to CASA 6 in the fact that there won't be a detour. It'll be open to traffic and it should be a really quick project once it gets going.
Andrea, somebody asked me this yesterday. So 34 and 4?
Okay.
There's nothing in the works yet for a roundabout, is there?
No, and that one's been brought up quite a bit and it's actually one that I requested studied specifically in the county safety plan that they're working on right now. I think that that one, we really need to have some discussions with MINDOT because it's their highway. We would just be paying for the legs of it, kind of like the one south of town here. We own the two legs. So we have to start some conversation with MINDOT, get them on board to it and find the funding for it too, you know, for our legs. It's not in my plan right now, but if we could find some safety money or something to do it, I think it's very much needed to do, in my opinion, a roundabout there, have a single lane roundabout going into town.
Well, thank you, Andrea and Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we doing a construction update?
We are not. I just talked to Justin and we had a meeting on Tuesday to talk about staging and we're having another meeting tomorrow relative to law enforcement staging, so I'm going to bring Justin on Wednesday, on Tuesday next week to provide that update. We'll actually have a better phasing plan for you next week, so.
Okay.
That's what I've been frantically doing is trying to, we'll do that next Tuesday.
All right, then Cory, you're up.
Good morning. So first of all, I want to go through the, we had the fall land auction yesterday. I didn't have it on the agenda, but being that it was just yesterday and finished up yesterday afternoon. 10 out of the 27 parcels sold for a value of $350,900. You know, as a, we expected more people, more bids, but the parcels I did sell, we did, we did get, a lot of them, we got multiple bids on, so it was good to, good to see. Some of them surprised us how much they went for. Some of us, some of them surprised us that they didn't sell, so. Yeah. Yeah.
So I was here, you know, and there wasn't, a lot of times the parcels for sale in Akeley don't express much interest. Could, could we ask for the values to be looked at again?
We could and, you know, one good thing with this new settlement is we can lower them to a minimum value, which is taxes that have been owed.
You can lower it down to that?
Yeah, anything that's within this 2016 to present, so that's one good thing that comes out of that settlement is that we can actually, we don't have to have them assessed. We can just put them at what the taxes owed are, so. We'll do that for the next auction. And then, then that can actually be done 30 days from now, which I don't think we're going to have an auction 30 days from now, but this spring, we hope to have another auction.
So then those prices would just come before the board?
Yep.
As you present whatever you're going to put on the auction.
Kay sends me out a list of what the taxes have been owed over the years and that's the minimum bid pretty much, and then any cleanup fees we have into the sites, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what's, one good thing that came out of that settlement is we can legally lower the price to a minimum bid. We actually did that with the parcel in the port because we've offered that one the last auction, so we lowered that to the minimum bid and it actually got bid up $10,000 more than what we offered it for, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, we were thinking about that on Boulder Lake one.
Yeah.
Have it lower, then get, be interested in it and then all of a sudden they start bidding it.
Yep, yep, you get two people. Yeah, all you need is one person that's interested in the same parcel to get it bid up, so. And that's a, that's like a 1938 forfeiture, so we can't, can't really, can't really mess with anything before 2016 unless we work with the assessor.
Oh, so you can't assess the price on anything prior to 2016?
We need the, legally, we need a price set by the assessor on any parcels forfeited before 2016. After 16, we can set it to that minimum bid of just taxes owed.
So that could sit there for a long time.
Yeah, yep, yep.
However, could we, could we, you know, say it's offered multiple times and can then we ask the assessor?
You can, yep, yep. I can work with Maria and say, you know, this parcel's probably not worth $600,000.
Yeah.
Maybe $350,000 or whatever, but.
It's based on, I mean, assessed value or based on sales? Or if you're not getting a sale, well then you're charging too much?
Yep, but on the other hand, 12 acres on Boulder Lake should be worth quite a bit too, so. Yeah, we'll work on it in the future and hopefully get some of these sold. They are offered over the counter right now. So we have got a few calls this morning, so hopefully we'll get rid of some of them. Next spring should be the next auction. And talking with other, other land departments at other counties, they're doing some online auctions, so possibly we could look into that. And I think you get a, more of a variety of people looking at online auctions nowadays, so. We'll look at that in the future. But overall, it was, it was good to get rid of 10 of the parcels anyways. First item I have on the actual agenda is the review of the October 7th timber auction results. We're seeing timber selling high again. We actually, our Aspen prices are the highest in the state, so it's really good to see. We're fortunate, fortunate to have the mills around. So 11 out of 11 tracts of timber sold for $276,335.89. The average timber value per acre sold was $727. And the four timber auctions in 2024 sold for a total of $1.47 million. And that doesn't include special product permits or informal sales, so. I thought that was a pretty good value we saw come out of the four auctions. Yeah, so our Aspen is actually averaging $43 a cord right now. That's, that's really good to see. And the pine, the mixed pine is almost $70 a cord, so it's really good to see that. Just for your information. And our next auction will be in the first week of January.
When you said cord, what lengths do they cut those into?
They're eight-foot lengths. Yep, yep. So a cord is the four by four by eight foot. Yeah, so, yeah, that would be the eight-foot length. Yep. Yeah. So the next one is, it's kind of based on my opinion, but also a lot of the public's opinion. I believe in the long tradition of collecting your own, your own Christmas tree out of the woods. I enjoy going out with my kids and cutting down a tree and it's kind of exciting to have the kids pick out a tree and be able to put it up and decorate it, so this one just has to do with that, to add a Christmas tree harvest to our fee schedule. And it'd be $25 for one tree and it, to not be located in a plantation and must be less than 15 feet tall. And, yeah, so I was talking to our foresters this morning about it and, you know, we, we sell these, we sell permits with balsam on it, or balsam worth about $10 per cord. So it takes about five trees to get a cord probably, so you sell one tree for $25 when you could cut five mature trees for $10, so. It's just an extra way to get extra funding too for our department and. Yeah, I just, I would, members of the public have expressed interest in collecting a tree legally on county land and I think, I think this would be a fair thing to do and add to our fee schedule. Just looking for approval.
Are you going to be providing a map for people to look at?
Yes, yep. Our foresters will provide a map and have an area designated for the harvest, so. We do have areas of high balsam density, so that's probably where we're going to go. And then there's always some spruce mixed in.
Do you know of, maybe evidence of people cutting in the past?
There's been illegally harvesting, which, which is inevitable. I don't think you're going to ever keep everyone honest, but this is just a way people can do it honestly and legally. We for sure see, see stumps out in the forest.
What would a tree cost if they bought it in town then?
It's, I, probably $60 to $80, I'm guessing.
This is a good, pretty good price?
Yeah, yep, and it's an affordable option and a way to have some family time out in the woods.
Yeah, yeah, I've used to do that with my son.
Yeah, yep.
So then this would just be added to the fee schedule that we're setting in December?
Yep, yeah, it'd be added to the fee schedule, just like we have balsam boughs that people are collecting right now. Yeah. Just one more thing to add to the fee schedule.
Board wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted moves?
I'll second.
Tom seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is cabin lease exchange. Mike Baumgartner is deciding to, they don't use their cabin enough, so they're deciding to transfer the ownership rights to Matt Burgess, Jackie Burgess, Kelsey Burgess, and Brad Burgess. The location of the lease is located in Section 17 of 14234. And it is lease number 40. And the, I believe these, these folks hunt with the Baumgartner family and it would just be a transfer of, transfer of the lease ownership rights. So I'm just looking for approval on, on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Steve moves?
I'll second.
Ed seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. I think I just have one more thing.
Yep, soaring eagle.
Yep. So I have the, I have soaring eagle folks here with me to answer any questions if there's, if there's any questions. So earlier this year, I brought, brought up a, or I asked to be able to apply for a grant, a federal grant to cover costs to, for the ski, the ski club to obtain a new ATV and groomer for their ski trails. And the grant was approved. The, the federal grant will fund 75% of the cost, which is up to $31,450. And the Atasca, Atasca Tour Outdoors activities club will cover any cost over the 75% threshold, which they actually gave me a check this morning to cover that. The, the equipment is ready for pickup and Hubbard County, our department will make the initial purchase and then recuperate, recuperate funds from, by sending in requests for reimbursement. I, I think the ski trails up there bring in a lot of folks and it'd be great to see them have some good equipment there to, to accommodate those, those people that like to ski up there. In the end, the county won't, won't lose any money over the deal, so it's just the initial purchase. And then we'll recuperate the, the costs by, by sending in the request for reimbursement.
So this area is used in multiple ways throughout the year and I'll make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I just want to say the track system is very unique, so we only have one quote on that. That's why there's only one quote there.
Yeah, I saw it came on a yellow, so that was pretty interesting.
So, and yeah, we're glad to have this group here and it's a beautiful area up there.
All right, thanks Cory.
Thank you.
Should we go to 8B?
We can, Brian is on his way over.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Yep.
So what would you like to do?
So if we can go to 9A.
Okay.
And we need to have a public hearing to review the fees, the proposed fee schedule every year. Given the amount of time that we need for posting, we're suggesting that we hold that at our December 3 meeting at 9:30 a.m. We just need a motion to set that.
Okay, Dave moves?
I'll second.
Ed seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the next item is really informational. Steve and Tom have been meeting with commissioners from Cass County and Josh Stevenson and I for the past couple of months to talk about the possibility of creating an ambulance service district to take over the ambulance license that the City of Walker has told Cass County that they can no longer maintain. And we've gotten to the point where before we walk through the formal process of establishing that district and creating a new board and creating taxing authority, the commissioners really felt that we wanted to have, have a public meeting to discuss. So the, the details are in place for us to hold a public meeting on Monday, November 25th at 6 o'clock at the Walker Area Community Center. We have a mailer set to go with Haas Printing to send a direct postcard to everybody who's got at least one parcel within that service area to let them know about that meeting. The, the postcard, I could probably find it here quickly, but basically says that there's going to be a meeting that the commissioners from the two counties are asking, you know, wanting to make sure that you are aware of that and that you have an opportunity to attend, that the creation of this service district could have an impact on their property taxes. And we're holding a public meeting to have a conversation about that. And the intent is to provide a board and a service district and taxing authority to maintain the current level of service that they have in that ambulance service district. So we don't, we don't really need action. I would let Commissioner Krueger and Karen speak about the conversations that we'd had. But this would be, we would hold this meeting and then in- But this would be, we would hold this meeting and then in, if, if we're going forward and the consensus continues to be, yes, we need ambulance service in that area, uh, we would probably walk through the, the specific process for establishing that board starting in January. But maybe one of, both of you have comments on where we're at with that ad hoc group?
Were you being a maker on Monday?
Um, yeah, I talked to Eric, or I went down to the office. I didn't talk to him directly, but I do have a planning commission that night and there's one item on the, on the planning commission agenda, but it is a approval of a final plat. So it's really not, not that big of a deal. Um, so I'm, I'm, my intent is to be at this, at this meeting on the twenty-fifth, yes.
So I have a question. Does this come back to the county board to actually vote on?
Yep.
So the, um, uh, what the process would require, according to statute one forty-four F zero one, I believe, is that, uh, both county boards would have to authorize resolutions establishing that district and establishing the members of the board and the bylaws for that district. And then that district would be comprised of elected officials of the combined CAS and Hubbard County. Conversations we've had relative to that are there's more parcels affected in CAS than Hubbard, so it'd probably be three commissioners and two commissioners. And they would have the responsibility for, um, issuing an RFP to determine who's gonna provide services for that service area and, uh, determining the budget and establishing a levy to be approved by both CAS and Hubbard Counties. And that would very likely, if that, if that were the case and we stayed on time, that would mean that we could probably collect, I think we were talking about six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six to support operations. Josh has a, uh, a presentation ready to go that talks about the fact that the, um, Medicare reimbursements have not kept pace with the cost of providing services. And we know that over at Heritage that that happens. It's happening with ambulance services as well. The contract that the city Walker has with, uh, North Ambulance says that they're not gonna pay them anything to provide that service, that they're on their own for that. And they've both kinda reached a point where, those services aren't gonna continue without some source, some additional sources of funding. So yes, there's a, there's a, a process. The, um, the commissioners involved in that ad hoc committee wanted to make sure to have a public meeting just to get the word out, um, to have people have an opportunity to ask questions. Josh and I have been working on this presentation and we wanna make this about five or eight minutes and spend time answering questions that people have. That'll be an interesting question to ask when you, as they're discussing it, is, there's usually an eighteen month lag in reimbursements. How do you deal with that when you're starting a new entity?
You get an eighteen month lag from Medicare and, really? I didn't know that. Wow.
Cause I assume the eighteen month lag will go to the city of Walker from previous and then you're gonna be starting fresh. And if they don't reimburse you for a year to eighteen months, you're gonna have to cover that with your levy somehow. The city of Walker is not taking any money in. They have contract, their contract with North says North operates it. So North is getting the reimbursement. So the cities, the money's not going through the city of Walker at this point in time. So that point will be mute, but. It, it, it should be, yep. Whatever's earned.
I threw at that topic. Cause I got, that, that six hundred and fifty thousand, that is for one garage located in Walker, I do believe.
That estimate, that estimate is to maintain the current level of service.
Correct, yeah. We had discussion about possibly another one down in Hackensack, but this is for the one. Those who live in Hackensack, or at least the commissioner that's down there said they, they have no complaints down there, so.
And truthfully, I had a conversation with the head of the EMS RB. And he said that the simplest way to do this, if everyone is in agreement, is to transfer the license at the current level of service. Later, the board can determine if additional levels of service are warranted. But the, the simplest way to do this would be to maintain the existing level of service and transfer the license. Then it would be kind of a administrative process. So going back to that Medicare thing, whoever was providing services before though, whatever services they provided are supposed to be reimbursed by Medicare, you'd think they would get those payments up to the day they quit. And then any new service that's provided, you would have to estimate roughly for a year from data from other service providers, what percentage is gonna be Medicare paying, paid and figure out how much you're going to have to have to float that first year. Otherwise you'll be short money. Two, two things. One, it is completely possible that the new district, if it's created, would negotiate directly with the current provider. Two, if they decided to issue an RFP, it's highly unlikely that there would be any additional respondents. Uh, and hopefully the current respondent responds. If the city of Walker backed away and just let the license expire, EMS RB would put it out there and say, okay, all you adjacent service areas, who's willing to take a piece of this? And then everybody would be that much further away from service than they currently are.
Increasing response times.
That's really not a, really not a great option.
I had a really interesting conversation. Someone called me after he saw the article from North Memorial in the paper. And I don't know if you guys remember, but, um, when we went to the district two meetings and AMC, they were really pushing, I don't know, was it two or three years ago? That we would give up our local dispatcher and then go with, you know, dispatcher at a bigger level, at a larger level. Anybody remember that besides me? Okay. This person had worked for the ambulance service and, and said that part of the wait time frustration really is the loss of local control because when, when you get a phone call, when they receive the phone call, they don't know the local layout. And so they dispatch differently than we would at a local level. So I just throw that out for information. And then the second thing this person said was that the metro areas aren't struggling with the finances as the rural areas are for. So.
Because they don't have as high a percentage of Medicare reimbursable rides. Both, both CAS and Hubbard have local dispatchers, so that you're.
Do they?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we had signed away from doing that because we didn't do the training.
Our, our local offices are dispatching locally for all those services. It, yes, there was a conversation about considering combination of those things and, um, with one exception, which you heard at AMC Fall Policy a year and a half ago, uh, down in Candy Ojai and one of the cities down there. Uh, I don't know that anybody has taken up a joint powers like that. And I would think as long as a region doesn't get that large, but like two county, like a two county, neighboring counties sharing a dispatch thing, you know, it wouldn't take long before the dispatcher's new delay landed in the new county. But if it got too big, that's problematic. So the initial meeting was, the, the conversation was to have it on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, that they, at the community center, but that date was not available. And so it was, the two dates that were discussed were the twenty-sixth and twenty-fifth. It was set the twenty-fifth because the twenty-sixth wasn't available. Walker's the center, geological, geographical center of that area. That's why it was chosen as a, as an option. And it's big enough to hold everybody if we get good turnout.
And there'll be a, there's a Zoom op, option too.
There will be a Zoom option as well.
So because we have to make a decision on this later, would you two feel it would be beneficial, the three of us? Zoomed or attended?
Oh, yeah. Oh, in fact, when we discuss that, it would be encouraging other commissioners to, to either go in person or pendulum, yep.
And if it's available by Zoom, then that'd make it a lot easier for me.
So this is, what Josh and I are hoping to have is enough heads nodding in consent to say, yep, we're gonna send out seven thousand postcards on Tuesday. Haas has got them all lined up and queued up and ready to go. And they're waiting for us to verify the final, uh, wording and to say, yep, go ahead and send those, um, so that, and then the public meeting will be that forum and opportunity to have a conversation to determine what the next steps are. Part of the presentation, Josh and I will talk about technically what the next steps are if we move forward with this. But today it's just to know that we're gonna send.
Like just one item to note about the cost per household or for, per property. A two hundred and fifty thousand dollar household, the projected, uh, tax, uh, burden would be forty-six dollars for a year.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's twelve, thirteen dollars per hundred thousand. Maybe, maybe sixteen or seventeen, but, and of course that changes, right? With the home state exclusion, properties up to about five hundred thousand dollars pay a little bit less and properties overpay more because they don't get any of that exclusion. But it is, it is one more tax. To this point is a, it's, however you determine it, a modest request to maintain services. Hospital districts and ambulance districts exist across the state. Uh, statute allows boards to create them. I have to review the process as to whether or not there's a, a public hearing or if there's just a reverse referendum relative to that, but, um, my intention is to, um, Josh and I would have all those materials prepared sometime in December after this meeting, depending on the outcome of that meeting.
So then, uh, the, the subcommittee board would then review the increases each year and then make a recommendation to the two county boards?
Well, there, it's not, not the subcommittee. You'd actually create a taxing district board.
Okay, and so there'd be three and two commissioners?
And appoint, and appoint five commissioners. We're recommending to that. They would actually look at the budget, review the budget, manage the contracts and make a recommendation to the board for tax.
Okay.
Yep. And once it's created, they'd have autonomy over it.
Yeah, okay.
I was just gonna say that, um, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. When I was at the AMC Policy Conference on a couple of different occasions, that this topic was brought up by commissioners. So it's something that rural counties and other places are facing as well. I wouldn't doubt if a future board here will have to consider it for Park Rapids, um, district.
The reality is too, if they don't increase the reimbursement rates in rural areas, it's gonna be harder and harder.
That's the problem, yeah.
Private entities are not gonna be able to make the business model work. If, if we hadn't seen the operational turnaround at Heritage Living Center, this same authority would have allowed us to create a district to tax for that function. It's emergency services. So those, those functions, uh, fire, ambulance, et cetera, can all, can all be lumped into one authority. But for right now, this is just knowing that we're gonna spend a few thousand dollars and send out, I don't know, seven or eight thousand postcards. I don't know what option people have, you know, if, if they don't choose to, to go this route and be without a service, cause I don't see a private entity paying anyone a due.
Well, when the need comes up for an ambulance, you're, you're gonna want one to come, come there as fast as possible.
Right.
So who's, who's paying for the postcards? Are you splitting that with CAS County?
We're splitting it with CAS. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna pay the bill cause Haas is local and then CAS is gonna reimburse us for their share. That's a, you know, it's a larger issue at the state government too, cause they have to decide here if they're gonna get reimbursement rates to a level that's commensurate with private entities being able to provide this service. Otherwise it's all gonna have to roll to government. And I'm not so sure that's the most efficient way to do it long term, but that's the debate they have to struggle with. It may cost more money.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go back to, um, Brian for eight eight, which would be to approve the, um, person for the bank account?
Oh, for the bank account?
Yeah, we'll take that up first and then Marley.
Oh, okay.
Could actually probably have been on consent, but it didn't make consent, so.
Okay, yeah. So this is just, uh, we have done some internal, we had, uh, one of our, um, case aides leave that was in a position working with accounting and, um, the, uh, so we're just swapping that around and getting everything, um, switched up. So, and the bank does it all through, um, DocuSign now, so just need the approval to get those things switched out.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted moves. Dave seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Marley.
So the next one on the agenda, um, that was added is for the contract for public health. And again, I, that we've have a really, really good relationship with CHI. It works really well, very cost effective for, for the county and, I would, again, I would just ask for the approval.
Do you wanna do, Lewis, your little bit of review, Marley, with this?
I can, yes. Um, so.
Just, the first line mentions that Jonathan's already reviewed this, so he and I have seen this and.
Yep, Jon- Jonathan Frieden, every year, um, updates the, uh, purchase of service agreement. Um, the, really the only update every year is the amount, cause our grant funding changes year to year. It also was reviewed by our, um, CHI legal department and they add this, the addendum at the back. This is all unchanged from years past. Um, it's already been signed by, uh, Ben Kopelman. Um, just, it talks about the services, the public health services we provide. You know, WIC, newborn home visiting, um, family home visiting, prenatal, postpartum, uh, immunizations, um, adult case management, et cetera. And, um, so it's no, no change to any of the services we provide. And then I just, uh, put a few updates on just, um, kind of our twenty twenty-four numbers. Our average WIC caseload in fiscal year twenty-four was five eighteen. And that is, we have, um, in the last two years have seen about an increase of almost a hundred per month. So the demand for that service is there. And we did hire a new WIC coordinator in March of twenty twenty-four. Our average home visiting caseload is fourteen, which is well above our goal set by our grant. So far this year, we've distributed ninety-three car seats to Hubbard County families, seventy prenatal and postpartum contacts and eighty-five, we have eighty-five case management clients across, um, SNF, SNBC complex and seniors with twelve staff members at your community health department.
I do wanna say, uh, we had the, um, the DHS issue where we had for the, um, min choices assessments, uh, but still we are mandated by DHS to have a nurse that does consult with us. And so even though Marley, they're not able to do those, um, Marley so graciously allowed us to, um, keep one of the, um, RNs on to, and within our, um, a group or the, uh, the committee that. Yeah, the team. So we will be getting to keep that part of it, so it's cool. Thank you.
Yeah, they, they work, they, Dora and Crystal work very well with the, um, social services staff.
Was this contracted amount, the amount used in our budget forecast?
Yes.
Yep. I'm gonna do approve.
Dave moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move to nine C.
And this is really simply administrative. Jonathan's not available to be here. We could probably put this on consent, but, um, this is the continuing, uh, two-year extension of the count, of the services between the county attorney's office and the city of Park Rapids.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And then the only update that I have is you each have a copy of your townships and cities and who has opted in and not opted in or opted out relative to the HRA, uh, formation. We'll be following up with people we haven't gotten a response from. Uh, but if you have an opportunity or see any of these individuals, just encourage them to respond to Denise's and my emails.
Larry Smith at Pro Wing had called me maybe through several weeks ago on this and had questioned. I'm surprised they haven't made a decision yet.
I, I don't, and I don't know that they, that they haven't, but, uh, I just got, I, I had an email from Straight River Township and, and I, I followed up with him and I said, I haven't received your update. And she said, I didn't know where to bring it. And I said, well, you can, if you can scan it, you can email it back to me at this address, or if you wanna drop it off at the courthouse, we'll take it here as well. So they have been doing all of those things that we've gotten in so far.
Yeah, so the highlighted ones are, what does that mean? Cause I see like Farden is highlighted. But I know that they said that they were gonna. Because I see like Farden is highlighted, but I know that they said that they were gonna opt in.
Is there highlighted, that means that I we have not received their res- a copy of their resolution opting in or out.
Okay.
So when I I sent emails to my two, and then I just copied Denise on it for the convenience of the people.
So the last correspondence they got from Denise was um a formatted resolution appropriate for their authority, because originally I'd sent out a generic one. And um formatting resolutions is just something that some people don't do all the time, so I asked Denise to format an individual one for each authority that all they would have to do is present, vote and sign. Um so we'll follow up again, and we knew this was gonna take a while to um. To get a response from everybody, but we will keep working till we do.
And at least if they if they don't get the resolution in at the timeframe, but it'll be in their board minutes that it was passed.
Yes, and if even if we get a copy of that, we'll be okay.
Okay. Um oh, you wanna bring up the work session, Jeff?
Um yes. So we will have a personnel committee meeting after this meeting, looks like we'll be able to start early. And then work session next week, I think the two items we're gonna have is we're gonna have Derek from um Park Rapids Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we will have uh Justin from ICS here to review the um phasing plans for the for the project. We had, like I said, we had a meeting last week with the occupants of this floor who are gonna be affected or of this building who are gonna be affected and displaced, we're having a meeting tomorrow with the other one. And then we're picking up on an every other week meeting basis, just to, that's our construction meeting is every other week um going forward, so.
And then will Crystal be presenting on the One Watershed One plan or?
Jake will be.
Jake will be.
Jake will be here, okay.
Okay. All right.
Just a reminder that we will not have a work session in December because that's the week we'll be at AMC, but we'll have our two regular meetings. Um nothing has changed relative to the budget and the levy, uh some little, I just get some little notes that we have to adjust this number by this much and this number by this much, but at this point, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we're we're settled in on that um. Twenty-one, uh that five point nine percent increase at this point.
Is everybody planning to go to AMC? Are you two Dave?
That was one of my questions I have written down here is, have the reservations been made yet, or is that is that open for reservations yet?
For the one in December, yeah, they all been made.
They all been made?
Yeah.
I think I got an email a long time ago saying my room was.
I was searching searching my old emails, I couldn't find it, so.
Oh, great, I can uh uh usually the hotel confirmation goes directly to your email address, um but I I do know that everybody was registered as and and attended well, so.
It double tree, right, wasn't it?
It comes from Hilton.
It comes from the Hilton, okay.
Hilton Double Tree Bloomington this year.
Okay, so if you search that, Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, it came on on November third, or I mean, excuse me, um September third.
Oh, no, I didn't search far enough back then. Yeah, somebody, when it get buried like that.
There's there's usually room at that hotel for everyone.
Okay.
Um but we Denise is still really on point about making reservations the first day of because it's easier to release them later.
All right, committee reports. Dave, you wanna start this time?
Sure, I'll start with here, Teaches, it's the end of their fiscal year, at the end of September, um the quality ratings remained at four all the way across the board. Uh we had eight hires, one termination, still have five open FTEs. Um census at the Manor is at twenty point six three, the cottages is at sixteen. And Heritage Living was at thirty-nine point six, those are as of the end of the month, they're they're actually a little higher as of the end of October. Um EBITDA, the Heritage Manor had a positive forty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight in September, cottages positive nine thousand three hundred and sixty-eight. The Living Center had a positive sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight for a total combined of a hundred twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-four. And then the update on the year. Year totals, uh. Let's see, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the revenue was nine million six hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-six, we had budgeted for seven million nine hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and seven. So that was about one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollar improvement in the good in revenue, expenses were nine million two hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and ten. We projected eight million five hundred and eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two, uh so expenses were up seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. Uh operating net income on the year was three hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five thousand. We had projected a and budgeted a negative five hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five, so big swing there too. And our net income was three hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and eight, and the EBITDA for the year was one million four hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and twelve. So as of nine thirty twenty-four, cash and cash equivalents were up to five hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-three. So that, of course, is because we took the negative fund balance and moved it to a payable to the county, and that was done uh in March. That was a payable of one million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine, since then it's dropped a little bit. And then uh since we're building that fund balance up now, once that gets up a little higher, we could start paying down that payable real more as we go along.
I went to the uh the LAC, that's the local advisory committee, their drop-in center over there where they have like they get together, and they had Halloween party and I was talking to one guy and he he lives there and they're they're really happy with uh. Being there, he likes the meals, um he said there's a waiting list to get in there too at the cottage, I think that's it.
Yeah, we're looking at a few other things with meals to maybe potentially change around a little bit, but the, I know the survey of uh, we had a survey of residents, which was quite good, but then they also do a survey of uh family members. Of the residents and uh everything was really pretty good, um maybe a little bit on the meal thing and what to do differently.
Did they have a, my my dad had lived in a place like that when he was still alive, but did they have a situation where family can come and join him with a meal? Oh, okay, and even for his, they had like a little private dining area where you could gather together.
They do, even at the cottages, if you wanted to bring in a meal, um I guess in the sub-entry before you actually enter the cottages, there's a little sitting area. And stuff on the table that you can have lunch with them there, or you can go into the cottages and have lunch with them every once in a while.
Good.
Very good, yeah.
HLC?
Um what is new there? Uh Pinecrest is is adding about two a month, so it's a little slower than we had anticipated. Um most places take about six months um to fill, we're only three months in, so we're not not too worried about it yet, um should turn out fine. What else did we talk about?
Yeah, fundraiser.
Yeah, our fundraiser, the gun bingo went very well, uh we had roughly two hundred and twenty-some paid ticket holders. Yeah, gave away all the guns, uh those that we had multiple bingo winners, we paid out the cash and then raffled the guns, so everything went. Uh everybody enjoyed the tacos, the the choir did a great job in the kitchen, Jeff kinda led led the kitchen effort in helping them find the lay of the land and I think it was great first time. So we should clear twenty to twenty-three thousand, somewhere in there.
Are all the units at Pinecrest finished?
Are they all what, finished? Yeah, yeah, even the community room is is finished, it needs some furniture yet. Keep an eye on that, and then I was talking to Mary, some of the areas outside, trying to figure out how do you landscape it without requiring water? So she put a whole bunch of uh mulch-based wood chips in different areas and probably a look this spring and maybe planting some, you know, drought tolerant trees in different areas would be good.
And they were working with SWCD on the landscaping.
And if that turns out well, then maybe we can do a little bit of that at the HRA at Metal Brook and that. That's got some areas that could use some attention too. And uh, no other discussions were of any big importance. The two big grants that the city of Park Rapids has received, so that that'll be good.
And they hired someone at HLC?
Yeah, and we hired a staff person so we can have that extra staffing to help with the HRA and EDA stuff.
And your thoughts on the nine county hub and spoke uh when we met with the capital investment committee last week? Zoom.
And that, uh are you talking about the state meeting the other day?
Yeah.
The solid waste one?
Yeah. I thought it went rather well, I I thought it was good participation.
Good participation, um. You know, the the, I guess the the concern coming out of it is, you know, Senator Pap is wondering, you know, where they're gonna find the money, it didn't sound very promising that they're gonna really find any money.
Did they?
I thought one commissioner said it well, I mean.
John at the end there?
Either it was less than what, point one or point, whatever the percentage works out to, it was less than one percent of the seventeen billion surplus we had.
Yeah, that's one, uh at other meetings like this that that I've attended and John Carlson from Bill Trenmy County's been there, and he's basically said what I've said at those meetings is that it's a a matter of priorities.
Yes.
And like John said, they spent, what we were asking last year was less than three tenths of one percent.
Yeah.
Of that nineteen billion dollar surplus, and yet they couldn't find any funding, and now like David says, they're.
But they spent a lot of money on on, you know, different social things.
Health and human services.
And yeah, that affect a smaller amount of people where solid waste affects everybody.
Yeah, the only thing.
It's more than the fifty-four million like this, it it, the rest of the regions are coming next, and it's gonna be a statewide issue all over the place.
So did they did they discuss at that meeting on Wednesday, you know, the state's making us close down, but there's no solution, did that come up as part of the discussion?
They brought up how if maybe they should not start the new rules until things are more in place or whatever.
Was there a response?
Um not really, you know, they kind of underst- I think that was a thing though, was that the the senators and and representatives that were there, they understood. You know, and then it was brought up, you know, we've got a plan, we're all set, and we're the only ones in the state that are. So in the future here, which is four to five years, our landfills are gonna be full, and others are filling up, and there's no process to start new ones. You know, so it's it's basically time's running out here, and and the only thing I was gonna add that John didn't say that. I go back and forth because some of it's a little bit of rhetoric or whatever, but they'll spend billions of dollars on light rail that most Minnesotans will never use. But solid waste and the construction and demolition landfill stuff, that'll affect every single Minnesotan, and yet here we sit, time running out and nothing's being done.
Part of their problem was, not that they can't necessarily spend the money, they haven't created the mechanism to provide the funding, so that that's part of the problem too, but everybody did a really good job of driving home the message that. Our landfills are throughout the whole region are virtually like eighty percent of them are almost at capacity, so in the next three to five years, we either have to build, each county's gotta build new C and D landfills, and they have to be lined. Which makes them what, two or three tenths more expensive than online, which isn't practical to assess across the small tax base. Uh so they drove that home real good, but you know, she was talking about, well, can we do a phased approach, there isn't time, it's a problem, we're we're up against the wall here. How long is it gonna take to build this out, three to five years just to build it out, and we're gonna have to close down C and D landfills in the next three and five years at the same time.
And then where does that waste go?
It's gonna be piled.
Yeah.
Just at haphazardly spots if there's not provided.
Like our two landfills.
Or it ends up, it ends up going into a landfill instead of a demo landfill and divert it, and then our landfills don't last as long.
Yeah, there's another point.
So something that has to be done, and we're the we're the only region with a practical plan, they did a really good job of putting the plan together and.
I'm glad they got it.
Josh for leading a lot of that and putting that together too, because.
And John, Josh has done an outstanding job talking with the in front of the committees and stuff like that, down in St. Paul and everything, it's, he's done, he's gone above and beyond.
February when we're at policy meetings, that's because this is, this is just gonna keep rising up the ladder of importance.
So some, I I shared this at the managers meeting, someone had called me actually about, you know, the issues. And um said that the flavor of the state was on reuse, so they weren't, they weren't as concerned about actually making new landfills, did any of that come across in discussion?
Yeah, we we, Josh did a good job of of describing the intent of the plan up here was to recycle as much of it as possible, because you don't wanna be, you don't wanna be trucking a whole bunch of C and D waste to over a large geographic area. So you wanna reuse as much of it as you can and then condense the stuff you're shipping, so that the one big line landfill you do lasts long enough too.
Yeah, and I think at all the the spokes and the hub, there will be areas where they go through the C and D waste, because there's some, as we know, you know, woods uh uh not, wood that's not pressure treated. Has got a lot of different uses um out there, so you know, that's just one of them, concrete we can crush, you know, there's there's areas where.
Shingles.
Yeah, shingles, yeah, that we can recycle or reuse or whatever, but uh there's gonna have to be that along with the spokes at every one to sort through it.
Another thing that came out of that, that the state's really gonna have to work is that the office of management and budget or whatever in the state said that you cannot use some of these, the grant monies or the score money or whatever, I can't remember which bucket of money that everybody uses to for equipment. And they've been doing that for.
So what can you use it for then?
Or landfill or, you know, probably buildings and stuff, but you can't buy equipment, so this plan requires a lot of additional equipment, so they gotta figure that out too, either they're gonna to. To allow it like they have in the past and somebody just misinterpreted it, or they're gonna have to create another avenue for allowing that, so that we can get some grant money, because. I think Senator Pap has said, well, why don't you guys just pay for the equipment, and that, well, no, no, the equipment is the major, major part of it, there's no way we could do that.
I would think that the 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 land that the counties are providing should be used as a a match. Because the land ain't free. And you you started on that too, didn't you?
I I felt Senator Papas did not realize the sense of urgency that's created, I I got no sense of that from her at all.
No, you didn't, I didn't either.
It was just like, well, this is just another day at business, you know, and la di da, I'm just gonna keep moving forward, and then uh Senator Edkey's comments were appreciated and then Representative Knutson, the two comments that they made. And then um I just don't, it it didn't seem like it's a hot topic.
Yeah.
For them to tackle.
What that re- where does, what region does she represent?
I don't, I don't know.
Uh it's down the suburb.
It's gotta be, yeah.
And the other thing that was, uh somebody made the good comment, well, the way I see it, you have two choices, the state either helps us fund this, or you provide us an exemption. But even an exemption doesn't work when all your landfills are almost at capacity and you can't afford to build line one.
And the uh the the, getting the MPCA to bend a little on regulations, I think, is is difficult. It's almost, you know, they're, they make the rules, you have to live by the rules, but nobody monitors them. As far as legislative wise to really control them and keep them somewhat in check with what the desires and the needs are, you know, out in the public, and it's kinda shameful, I think, but that's just my opinion on it.
She represents Ramsey County.
And because we have such a robust solid waste program here, you don't end up with any dumping in the woods.
Oh.
I know, but that's what will happen if it closes.
It'll go back to people who'll start burning stuff in their backyard or dumping on private or private or public land. And we don't wanna go back to that, that'll be, that would be worse than if you hauled it to be incinerated or or put it in a landfill.
Dump it on public land, then all the other taxpayers have to pay for staff to go clean it up and remove it and dispose of it, and it just goes on and on and on.
So was there further discussion scheduled or was this just pre-legislative session or?
Yeah, I think this was the last one that I've been informed of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that committee. Yeah, that, that committee she chairs will have to figure out, you know, how to get that in the capital planning and what avenues they're going to use and where they're going to find the funding. Because without any funding and grants from, money from the state, it's, it's just going to sit here in limbo.
She did make the comment at the end there that she wished she would have funded us last year when they had the money.
You know, that's, you know, I'm going to be a little harsh here, that's pretty naive because that's true with everything. You know, you just don't spend your surplus willy-nilly and then make a comment like that, oh, I wish I would have had it, you know, because I could have funded this thing. Well, you know things are going to come up.
It was a huge surplus.
It's just prudent.
It's all about, all about priorities.
And unfun, and spent on unfunded mandates, so we still have to pay for things coming down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought people drove the message home in the committee very well and actually with a little bit of, with a little bit of sauce attached to it too.
Not too much.
She understood that it's a problem. So now the ball's in, in her and the legislative court to see what they do. AMC will be, of course, lobby for it too.
Well, thanks for bringing that up. I was glad to hear about it. I had another meeting attend, so I missed it, but glad all of you were.
Like you say, well-attended, so I was glad to see that.
There were some, yeah, it was good.
Steve, you want to go next?
I think we've talked about it all. I, I was, I was going to do hip, but I've been, I was fighting my technology all through that, so I didn't really catch but maybe a third of it. I don't know what's going on there.
Tom?
Um, I had several meetings, uh, one of them, uh, Crow Wing, one, whatever, said one plan, Jake would do that, cover that next week. Went to Crookston for the Dancing Sky Council on Aging meeting. There we approved the twenty-twenty-five area plan. And then we also approved the grant nutrition funding, um, which will be going with, uh, the whole region will be going now with Nutrition Services Incorporated and dropping Lutheran Social Services. Because Lutheran Social Services, they're changing from kitchens to, uh, everything's pre-made, pre-packed, frozen. In some plant down in Mississippi.
Was that part of the, because of the, the money was diverted away from centers?
Well, they're all getting paid less because of art is no longer getting.
Well, and part of it was they were diverting money to, um, inner city, but I can't remember what the diversion money was going for.
I don't know.
Okay.
But anyways, Nutrition Services, NSI, they're going to stay with the kitchens. You know, what Lutheran Services proposed is even further congregate meals where everyone gathers together, there would still be those frozen packages. That would be heated up. So anyways, the whole region is going to go with the NSI. That's all I got on them. And then Parks Board meeting, uh, let's see, bids, probably, which should be ordered today actually for that one and three-quarter mile section of trail that would go from that tunnel on seventy-one to the park. So they might be able to start clearing some trees even this year, but that's certainly we done next spring. Any money left over, then they'll start heading east of the tunnel. The dog park, that, that we've been talking about for Hartman Park, that's going to be put on hold for now because the city of Park Rapids is talking about putting a dog park at, uh, Rice Park. Yeah, the Rice Park.
Where's that on it?
That's over by that little dam.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
But if they put that, they really don't, they'll need two dog parks and so if they put that one in, then we won't do the one.
But it'll have to be a ways away from the water.
Uh, it's a small park, but apparently they've got room for it.
Oh, okay.
And there's already, they're, they're saying there's already, on one side, there's already fenced there.
Oh, for the DNR Fisheries Buildings, yeah, there's a fence over there.
I, I was just thinking for, there'll be a lot of, well, from the dogs going to the bathroom, you wouldn't want that to run down into the water under soil. That's what I was thinking.
I'll give you one guess what the biggest request is for parks in RAC I get from constituents.
What's that?
Pickleball courts, more pickleball.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's been talked about too, where are not we to do that? So it's, yeah, it's, it's been on the, on the table for discussion.
Hartman Park is busy all the time.
Yeah.
In good weather.
Groups could purchase the, uh, tax-deferred parcels in these small cities and build pickleball courts.
There you go.
Yeah, there's room for it.
Especially if we sold them for.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then the, the DNR did some, uh, oxygen testing on Deep Lake, and those are finished and, uh, levels are really good. High levels of oxygen for fish habitat. In fact, that probably got them talking about stocking it with trout. It'll be, uh, they call it brood trout, so that means mature, mature shell. And winterizing of all the parks is, uh, was nearly complete as of the meeting, so maybe as of today, they might be done. And then, uh, next last thing is we won't have a meeting again until, uh, February twenty-twenty-five. That's all I got.
Okay, next time.
All righty. I had, uh, HRTC. Talked about, uh, uh, we discussed the energy, staff brought up, uh, different programs that are available, um, currently. Let's see, generating projects in small communities. It was an overview of opportunities that our small communities may not even know that exist. Uh, the, there was a discussion on the projects that can be done and, uh, and places where you could explore and dream about opportunities. And that was B for five-county region. And housing was discussed. They'd also done a housing project for all five counties, which mirrored a lot of, I looked at the, this compared to the Hubbard County one that we had done. HLDC had done, and it was, uh, uh, very similar numbers. And then you could kind of compare how we in Hubbard County are kind of compared to other counties in the five-region area here. How we compare and a lot of it is the same needs. There's just a little bit of a tweaking here and there, and of course, uh, median value homes, um, are different. Hubbard County, the median value home is two hundred and nineteen thousand. An example, uh, Beltrami's one hundred and seventy-six, five. Clearwater County's a hundred and fifty. Lake of the Woods, a hundred and eighty. And Norman County, a hundred and fifteen, so of the five-county region, our median home values are the highest, which I guess is good. Let's see, and then we just had some administrative items, uh, you know, it's the end of the year and New Year coming, so we had to talk about health insurance and stuff like that.
Any news on, um, executive director hiring there?
Um, no, that, I, I thought about that though, just the other day. I should have brought it up at that last meeting. As you know, Cal Larson is, is, is the temporary, and Rick Rowan then moved over into the, um, chairman position. But yeah, like you said, and it was actually just yesterday too, I was thinking about, we should be getting on that. You know, I don't, it takes time to do all these things. And instead of sitting on our thumbs right now, we should be doing something. And I was, the next executive board meeting that we have, which should be this month, or I'm going to, if it's not on the agenda, definitely we'll be bringing it up. Let's see, and then we had Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center. That was the, um, the, uh, executive committees, uh, meeting. Uh, so we just went over the financial reports, um, went over the superintendent expenses. Uh, I think I mentioned before, Itasca County, who is a non-member, is requesting to become a member, so we've discussed that some. Program and projects, uh, facility updates. We've got, uh, let's see, I missed here. No. But most of the projects, like the, the cameras, um, the computer updates, the outdoor facilities are, are up, uh, up to date. We're looking at next year, twenty-twenty-five. And let's see. And then the Department of Corrections audit is in progress, which everything seems to be going well there. Let's see, in between there, I had also the hazardous waste. The Hubbard County Hazardous Management Plan. I actually did attend that, the, the first plan in, or the first meeting in February. So we talk about, of course, natural disasters and what are areas, what in Hubbard County, um, are the areas that we have to be concerned of, which would be like wildfires, windstorms, hailstorms, um, that kind of thing. We don't, of course, don't have much flooding here, if any, in the county, um, stuff like that. The, the draft plan is now available on the Hubbard County website. I didn't try to find it on the website, the, uh, Nick, Nick Upsall from the Sheriff's Department, um, I see last Wednesday, sent a, an email to all of us. And of course, I went on there and just clicked, uh, HMP website, uh, so it brought it up. But I'm not sure, if you go onto our homepage, how do you navigate to get to that? That's usually where I would struggle. Uh, and the, and like I said, the draft plan is also available, uh, from the email that Nick sent us. And I think it's, it looks good. Let's see, also had a North Country Community Health Board meeting. Went over the, uh, twenty-twenty-four budget review, uh, CHS administrative agreement. So this is kind of year-end stuff where we kind of get ready for next year. They went through the, the, uh, Grant Grid is what they call it. So the grant monies that we've gotten, um, what dollars have been spent and how much is left. Then, like I say, there was also a review of the bylaws. They had the administrative contract with CHS that we had to review and approve. Medical consultant contract, again, was had to been, uh, approved, reviewed and approved. We looked over the board. The board members', um, terms. And, um, in Hubbard County here, um, the only one that was up is, uh, April Coleman. And, uh, April, of course, was at the meeting, so I asked, and she said that she would like to re-up again, so that was, that was nice. And let's see, I think that pretty much covers that. And we just talked about the nine-county hub and spoke deal, so that's all I've got.
Okay, I have two, um, the La Library met last Thursday. So the, in the construction, that room will be, um, it's going to be, the walls are going to be moved?
The attorney's office is going to expand to include what's currently the La Library. The La Library will just be a nook for computers and a printer.
It's, it's hardly used, and currently there's several books in there that are not being used. So they're putting the word out to see if anybody wants them, otherwise they're going to be disposed of. There's four lawyer, um, bookcases, remember the old bookcases? And one really cool old table, so they're looking, um, Jonathan's office is going to take the bookcases. They're looking to see who can use the table. And so, um, two members from the La Library were present at the meeting last Thursday when we talked about, um, how the construction's going to go. And then, um, on the Mahabhi meeting on the twenty-fifth, so the person that's in charge of weatherization did a presentation. And this year, there's three point two million dollars. And now they're allowed to include windows. So if you know of anybody that, um, needs things done on their house, have them contact Mahabhi, because if we don't use the money, we lose it. They try spend on the average eight thousand dollars on a house, but if someone needs windows, you know, it might be up to forty thousand. So then they just need to plan well, so they can still cover the majority of houses that need work plus do the larger projects, so.
And there's income guidelines associated with that?
There is, but they've been adjusted, so.
Okay.
Have them contact Mahabhi. That's all I have. So, um, who, who's on the canvassing board?
Me.
Okay, you two, okay, so you'll do that on November twelfth? Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Dave and Ted, or excuse me, Ted and Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.